Okay, call the meeting order at 7:02 PM. Has the board had a chance to review our minutes?
Have Mr. Chairman like a motion accepted as printed?
Oh, I'll second it.
That's right, I wasn't.
Yeah, so you'll abstain?
I'm off doing it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and one abstention. Department heads will do Pat Riley and Kim from Rave first.
Oh, Pat Riley, she still lives in Rainham.
Pat, do you?
Did you take out your papers yet?
Yes.
Oh my goodness, what are you waiting for?
Pat, do you even read?
What's the deadline?
Do you want to read that first?
If you want me to, yeah, sure.
We have a resolution for Read Across America, whereas the citizens of Rainham stand firmly committed to promoting reading as a catalyst for our students' future academic success, their preparation for America's jobs of the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy. And whereas we know that most children who leave elementary school as poor readers rarely catch up, and we know that when children read outside of school, they do better in school, and whereas the Read Across America is sponsored nationally by the National Education Association and others locally, for the fifteenth year by the Rainham Association of Volunteers for Education, Inc., in partnership with the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District, Early Childhood Parents Organization, Merrill School, the La Liberty Parents Organization, the Rainham Middle School Parents Organization, and the Rainham Public Library. And whereas Read Across America celebrates the anniversary of the birthday of famous children Theodore Seuss Giselle on March 2nd, and promotes reading and adult involvement in the education of our community students, therefore be it hereby resolved that the Rainham Board of Selectmen proclaims the week of February 26th through March 3rd, 2012, as Read Across America Week in the town of Rainham, and calls on the citizens of the town to support the activities of Read Across America's effort, be it further resolved that the Rainham Board of Selectmen enthusiastically endorse Read Across America, and recommits our community to engage in programs and activities to make our children the best readers in the world. Pat and Kim.
Thank you very much.
Is that for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sorry.
I'll go second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is approved.
Thank you very much. It is the fifteenth year, believe it or not, time flies, and we were very fortunate because we got started at the very beginning back in 1998, because Kathleen Roberts was the state chairman at that time when it kicked off, so she brought the idea to us at Rave, and we started it right away and been having fun with it ever since. It's a great opportunity for us to bring special guests from the community into the schools to read Dr. Seuss stories. You know, at the beginning, we didn't think every year would be Dr. Seuss, but we just fell in love with Dr. Seuss from The Lorax to The Butter Battle Book and Cat in the Hat. So every year, we go to our Rainham library and ask them to get as many Dr. Seuss books as they can, and line up our special guests, and we have a great time with it. It's obviously to emphasize to the, our students, how important reading is, and it's important to everybody, whether you're a police officer, a firefighter, an elected official, anyone at all, reading is so important, and that's one thing that doesn't change. It's the key to a good education, so we have a great time with that. We're just in the process now of calling our special readers, so if you haven't got a call yet, you will, if you're on our list. We just signed up our Park and Rec Director, Liz Francis, and our selectmen, obviously, will be coming, and Senator Pacheco, Representative D'Amelia, and all of our regular guests visiting all of our schools, Merrill School, La Liberty, and the Rainham Middle School. We have a new principal to introduce this year at, for her first year in Rainham for Read Across America, Heidi Latander. We just met with her this afternoon, but she's excited, and she's had some great programs that she's done at the Mitchell Elementary School where she was the assistant principal, so we're going to try to incorporate some of those programs as well and expand what we do. So we're really excited about that. Kathleen Roberts could not be here tonight, but she will be with us for Read Across America Week, obviously. Kathleen always gets dressed up as the Cat in the Hat and has a great time, and we have a great time having her with us, so. Oh, Mr. Buckner, I didn't mention, Mr. Buckner's already signed up to, to read Dr. Seuss. So it's been a great year for Rave so far, and before we ask you to dawn the Dr. Seuss hats, I thought maybe Kim Dolan, our awesome exec, our volunteer coordinator, could recap a little bit about our Rave year so far.
Well, we started out the year with the kindergarten reception program, which is one of our biggest programs. We had over a hundred bus slots to fill. We have parent volunteers ride the kindergarten buses the first five days of the kindergarten classes, morning, afternoon, and midday routes, so we had about seventy-five volunteers help out this year to fill those slots. It went really well. We also help with the kindergarten tours before school starts. We also do Veterans Day programs, which we did in all three schools that were very well-received this year. We had our kindergarten full-day classes come over to the middle school and sing patriotic songs, which is always a big hit. And then we had Mr. Monty come and speak to the middle school as well, as he does every year, and he does a very good job. We also had...
The American Legion post 405 gave out flags for all of our...
Yes, they donated flags, so all of the Merrill students and the La Liberty students got to take flags home on Veterans Day, which was real nice. We had our biggest fundraiser, which is the craft fair. We had it in December this year, and it went very well, and we went, had it at La Liberty instead of Merrill for the first time, and that went very well, so I think we will continue to do that in the future. The crafters were very pleased, and we did very well on that fundraiser. Right now, we're starting to plan for Read Across America Week. We have fingerprinting coming up in March.
Chief King?
Yep, Chief King's going to help us with the fingerprinting again this year. We'll have our volunteer appreciation luncheon in April to say thank you to all the volunteers, and then in May, we have Cast Week, Children and Seniors Together Week, where we have seniors from the community come in and read stories to all three Rainham schools.
Kim's also heading up the Homework Helpers Club, which is a new initiative for us. It's going really well, too, Kim.
Yep, at the middle school, we meet Monday and Wednesday directly after school, 2:45 to 3:45. We have about twenty to twenty-five students come in, and we have about three to five mentors come in to work with those students if they need any help with their homework, and that's been going really well.
So it looks like it's another great year. This is Rave's thirty-first year. It's amazing.
You were in first grade.
Yeah, just about. Kindergarten done. But it's going well. And you know, we were going to ask you to put the Dr. Seuss hats on, and we thought we were out of luck because we forgot our camera, and Chief King is always here when we need him. Do you think you could take a photo, Chief? Would you like to be in the photo, and I can take it? No?
That's why he brings the camera.
Our chairman for Read Across, for Read Across America this year is Kate Dyer, and Becky Mallow, new on our board, is assisting her, so we're thrilled about that. We have many volunteers that help out with that, as well as the guest readers. They serve as hostesses, and we do have cupcakes coming for the children and cake for the volunteers and the special guests, so Walmart is going to be donating a cake this year, and also, we usually always have Bristol Plymouth students make us a cake as well. So there will be cake.
Walmart will donate two next year, right?
Yes, right.
One for each.
Will that one be open yet?
So here are the hats, yes.
Do you want to give those out?
Do we have enough for everybody?
I think we do.
Aren't you guys lucky?
Yep, we do.
The chairman definitely needs one.
Kim, here's her.
I've got one.
We have a couple of...
I've got one.
Oh, Happy Valentine's Day.
This one has a hole in the head. Can I have that?
It's got a hole in it?
No, I don't, I'm just...
I don't know what, I mean, do I know why I do the things I do?
No, I don't know why you do them, but you do do them.
I know. My Lord, have mercy on us. Usually you have to wear these when you lose an election, right?
Go first.
This is the Humphrey Bogart look.
The Humphrey Bogart look?
Oh, you have a little fluff in your lids.
I may be over, watch your language. Okay, we've got to move over.
Right, Chief?
Are we all set? Is this all right?
We're all set.
There we go.
All right.
Oops. Did you get my fluff?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Park and Rec, Liz.
It does?
Yeah. Chocolate. Did you, did you mind you going to the podium?
Good night, Happy Valentine's Day.
Good night, thank you ladies.
Thank you.
Good evening. Feel like I should be, like, giving a speech or something up here.
You are.
Yeah. Well, I just was invited to the meeting because I know you folks were talking about different uses for the South School.
Does that work?
And I had talked to Randy, and he said that there was a proposal from the Y to rent the space to provide childcare programs. And I met with my commission last week, and we were a little concerned because we were thinking that it probably doesn't make sense for the town to rent the space to a business that directly will compete with the same programs that we're offering through the town. So we just wanted to voice our concerns about that. And then, since I had that conversation, I was actually approached by Eden at the library, and she had just submitted an application for a grant for a teen center. And I was kind of, as she was talking to me about, you know, what do you think the needs in the community are, and I said, "I think there is a need," and that's part of my proposal at some point to use South School for that, to have a teen center there. So we, we were talking about that, and the space that I understand is available, or that possibly could be available, would be the basement of South School. So my request would be that instead of renting that space to another organization that offers similar programs, if you could allow the Park and Rec to start using that space and house a teen center in the, in the interim until the entire building is available, which I don't know what the terms of the, of the lease agreement would be for the second floor, but certainly we could start using that space to program in the spring and the summer. And I did speak to Lou Pacheco today, and he's very supportive of that. He's the resource officer at the, the middle school. He said that he really feels like there is a need for that. He would be willing to staff it, he would be willing to help get it up and going if we were able to house a teen center in that facility. And then, the, the other nice thing about the library having involvement in it is that they are also, they would be eligible for additional grants. When I talked to Lou, one of the problems with us getting grants in the past is that we're not considered a lower-income community, so some grants that are out there, it's, it's tough for us to get our hands on them. But the library is a 501(c)(3), which opens a lot of other doors in terms of charitable trust donations and things like that. So when I talked to Eden, I told her that I would be speaking with you guys, and if there was space, because she was going to try to run something in the conference room at the library. And I said, "Well, apply for the grant anyway, because I still think it's something that we want to get started in the community, and we would certainly partner with you in terms of staffing and other needs." But if we did have that space at the South School, that would be ideal, plus there's athletic fields in behind there, there's blacktops, so there would be, you know, Lou was kind of excited, he's like, "We could play flag football, we could have basketball games," so he just felt like that would be a really great space for that type of program. And then I guess at that point, we could really aggressively pursue grants to help offset the cost. Because you, you know, to do something like that, you wouldn't necessarily charge admission to the students, because the idea is to get them there, and so we would probably take it fairly slow and figure out exactly what the needs are and have limited hours that it would be open. So that's kind of my twofold request this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just waiting.
Two questions in the back.
Anything from the board?
I would, I guess I'll share this with my two partners in a sense, but many years ago, you were probably in the first grade at that time, Gary O'Neill, Mary Dooley, who you may, people may still know now, she's a guidance counselor now, and she was working for Park and Rec. And we were trying at that time to have something for Park and Rec to have their activities. They had none, and you still don't have, Danny. But what happened was, the priority came that the senior center took priority over that committee, and so therefore, the senior center is there. I'm not sure how many years the senior center there, ten years maybe?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and believe it or not, the place we had in mind at the time, you old timers will remember, is a place we called the haunted house. And the fire department turned it, put it on fire for practice, but in reality, it was the most structurally sound, more so than where you have your office, by the way. That building was structurally, if we, I said, just get something to cover up what it looks like, and, but we never did. So, so I'm looking at this as, when we talk about renting something, renting is temporary. We, we've had the school at the north, we've had Head Start at the south. Where's the school, the middle borough? Where's Head Start? I don't know where it is. So I think I would be in favor of prioritizing that building for Park and Rec. For two years, we're renting it, which will be like, something like the Gilmore Hall, which you paint every twenty years.
I'm almost ready for that again.
See, where the Gilmore Hall, second floor rented, and the first floor's available for, and I hope historical someday. But, but I think for two years, while we catch our breath on, on how, and why, and what we're going to do with that, so that's already, Randy, two years are we basically committed?
Probably a year and a half.
Year and a half, year and a half on the second floor. And then I realize, the Y is a valid, wonderful group of people, and good to their mother, I'm sure, but, but the point is that I think the town of Rainham should be gearing itself towards two buildings. One is the north, which I don't think has any life, and we can talk about that maybe now or later, but that looks like it's going to be hit by a ball, I'll tell you the truth, and the south, which is, I think, thanks to Head Start, no, kept in very good condition. So I would, I would be in favor of a program that the Park and Rec could do on the first floor and, and sort of get, get settled in the next year and a half, then, Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. I am not, I'm not against the Y, but I really don't think I want to see the Y coming in and taking over any kind of program that you can run as well as you do yourself. I, I don't really see the need for it personally, to have somebody else coming in. You do a great job with what you're doing, and, and I don't want to see that change. As far as the school goes, like Randy says, we've got a year and a half to rent the top floor. The bottom floor, I don't see why you can't start using, as long as it is structurally sound and safe and meets all of the different requirements that you would need, I don't see why you can't start using that on the second, on the first floor, rather. Now, would you start with a program of your own, or would you try to start a teen thing right away there?
Well, I would certainly meet with Eden and see what, they actually just put their grant application in, so the process for them to even get the funding is probably going to be a few months down the road.
Sure.
So, and I would sit down with Lou and probably put together a subcommittee and figure out how we want to approach it. But one of the things Lou and I talked about was, we would have, like I said, limited hours at the beginning of the program, maybe two days a week, certain hours, and then it would be supervised by myself or one of my staff and Lou, you know, at the same time, because Lou would be instrumental in getting some of the kids there anyway, because he's already in the school systems.
Exactly.
He knows the kids that he needs to get there in the afternoons, and he's had so much success with his JOTS program in the summer, that if he could roll that into an after-school place, and with that age group, it's kind of, you know, it's not your idea, it's not a good idea if it's your idea unless your buddy thinks it's a good idea, too. So the key is to get the right kids involved in the program.
Right.
And, and he would be instrumental in helping us get some of the kids interested in the program. But it would be a drop-in type program, where it would just be a safe place for, for kids to congregate a couple days a week in the after, after-school hours, so.
It would probably be the little older kids rather than the...
Yeah, probably their middle school, probably the middle school age group, you know, probably fifth to eighth grade, that, that range. And then what we would do from there is, depending on the success of the program, we could always expand it. I, I've talked to other Park and Rec directors that oversee teen centers, and sometimes they have special events that they run, like movie nights or whatnot, so there's different gimmicks that they do to get the kids to come in, and they have, you know, foosball tournaments, and, you know, now with video games and everything else, they have dance parties and, you know, where they use the Wii game, and so there's all different kinds of programming that you can do. But essentially, my vision would be to get it started, would just be a drop-in center where teens are welcome, certain hours of the week, and it would be supervised by staff, and, you know, if Lou wanted to try to organize, like I said, some sports events for the boys and, but essentially, you don't want to structure it too much, because they're looking for a place to hang out. That's what they like to do, they want to hang out, so.
Exactly.
You know.
Now, does it need much work down there, do you think, that would...
Well, I'd have to, I did go on the tour of the facility not that long ago, and my, my thought would be that classroom in the back that was converted to office space, that would probably be the best place to do that. And then the front, when you first walk in, where it's kind of open?
Yep.
That would be ideal for any kind of programming that we wanted to run. So my idea would be to kind of designate a space in the back there that would be just for the teens, they can decorate it. I mean, it's almost to the point where you, you don't want to do too much, you kind of want to get them involved in building it, because then they have more, they feel more entitled to the space. So I'm looking for a space, and then in the, in the front, in the foyer where you go in, that, that could be available for preschool tumbling classes, there's kitchen facility there, we could do cooking classes, so I think we'd have to kind of look at the space, look at some gaps in our programming, and figure out how we would want to utilize that space. But even in the summer months, when the school's not available to us, we could do the yoga in there, because as it is now, we just don't run that in the summer, because it's, it's not cost efficient for us to do that.
Well, I think it's great, and as far as I'm concerned, if you need a motion to get it, then I certainly would, I'll confer to you first.
Yeah, I, I just have a few comments. I don't mean to be the pessimist, but I haven't heard any numbers as to what it would cost yet. I attended the department head meeting last week, and we have a preliminary budget from the schools, about six or $700,000 increase, which would basically dry up any excess money we have going into this year. I don't know if this proposal has gone to the finance committee yet. I'm not opposed to Park and Rec having this built in, but I have concerns about growing your budget when we've pushed aside other priorities of mine, and I think of this board. We've had for years our fire chief come in asking for additional staffing that was committed by previous board selectmen that we haven't been able to honor because of budget cuts. We have a police department that has had slots left vacant because of budget cuts, and I've said this before, much of the basement floor of Town Hall is on part-time status because of budget cuts, and so I have a concern, and I was with Congressman Lynch today, and he was talking about the increased need at the federal level to cut federal spending and cut the multi-trillion-dollar deficit, and I have a concern about government at a time when we shouldn't continue to be watching our purse strings, creating new programs that could be filled at least temporarily by either nonprofits or the private sector. And so before I would offer my support, I'd have to see some numbers as to what it would cost the taxpayers moving forward, and I would appreciate the feedback of finance committee also.
Well, I mean, my comment to that would be, it's not going to cost us a dime, because we have, if, if the library gets that grant, that, we could put that money into any kind of supplies that we would need. And I'm a salaried, salaried employee, and if I'm at the teen center, it's not going to cost the town any additional money. My program coordinator's a salaried employee, so my plan moving forward would that, that it would not cost the town an additional dollar to run this.
And anybody that, oh, I'm sorry. Anybody that you bring in there, too, would probably be on a volunteer basis as opposed to a paid employee, because obviously, we would not be hiring anybody.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I've already submitted my budget, so.
Right.
And in our revolving funds, there is some flexibility with, with paying part-time staff, because some of the other programs that we run, any surpluses that we have from that, we could put back into the teen center, so.
Well, I would say that if it wasn't going to cost us any money, and you can't, you know, hold, obviously, anybody to anything, but I would not have a problem with it if it was not going to cost us any money. If you can do it within the budget that you already have, and the staff that you already have, I would have no, no objection, myself.
Yeah, that would be my intention, is that it wouldn't, the, there would be no additional cost to the town to do that. And like I said, that's why we would start with a very limited time period and then search out other funding.
And expand on it at a later date, especially if you get the grant.
Right, and if there's a, if there's a need a year from now, and it's hugely successful, and, you know, then we can discuss that, but the way my budget is right now, you wouldn't see any, any changes to that. We don't even have any funding in our budgets for these, for any of our programs, through the general fund.
They're all self-funded.
They're all self-funded, so.
Right.
If I may, too, I will second that in a second, but I wanted to say this and put it in the form of a motion, that when we originally took the rent from the private school for the north school, we were of an opinion that the north school could be salvaged, and so therefore, we put that into an account, and I think it's in around a hundred and, Mr. Buckner, a hundred and thirty?
I believe that's it.
Well, I was just saying, around a hundred, over a hundred, but at least, I'd say in around the area, $130,000. Now, looking at the north, it's up to discussion of the various committees, because we have committee meetings on that, but that, that may have to be torn down, that building, and whatever expense it is to tear that down, that should come out of that, let's say, the hundred and thirty. But having said that, it isn't going to cost $130,000. So I would, a motion, if this motion here passes, that, that, that Mr. Buckner prepare an article for the upcoming May town meeting, that the money that sits in that account for the north school be amended to read north and south school, so that that money then could be filtered towards, after, you know, the tearing down, say, of the north school, there's nothing to do with that, no doubt about it. That money then could be geared down towards the south school for seed money to start something that maybe, you know, you people might like to make that building. But having said that, I will second Mrs. Smith's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The motion that you were putting ahead.
And I make a motion that Mr. Buckner draw up an article to make that money available after we've taken care of the north for the south school.
Okay. I will second that, but I want to be very, we have to be very careful, because tearing down that building is going to cost more than you think, so as long as we just have...
It'll cost over, I'll tell you, yeah, that...
Yeah.
It's already the north, make an amendment, north and the south, so whatever there's left to happen.
All right, then I will second it that way.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board?
No...
Your guys?
Well, they were, they were waving, they were waving to different policemen.
They were.
Yeah.
Laurel's for...
We...
They were there for you, Liz.
If I had pom poms, I would have taken.
We have one appointment tonight, we have, well, tentative...
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Tentative appointment, we have, from Cindy Pillsbury, she is applying to be the warden for Precinct Four, and we all are familiar with Cindy, and I work for the town of Rainham. Marcia Sylvia, our acting town clerk, informed me that this is a position she'd like to see filled fairly quickly, and this is the only applicant that we have. What's the board's pleasure?
I'm moved to accept Cindy, if that's the will of Marcia.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is approved.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
It's a lifetime appointment.
Yes, no public hearings tonight, new business, Mr. McKenna.
Nothing.
Mrs. Smith.
No, sir.
Town administration's report, Mr. Buckner.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the South School Town Council is preparing the lease agreements between the town and the Watna Wamun Temple for the lease of the second floor, and beginning March 1st, and that should be ready for next, probably next week's meeting. And the wine and malt beverage license, today was the deadline for dismissal of the application for the annual wine and malt beverage that we have, and Asian Palace was the only applicant, and a hearing is required, so.
Two weeks. Two weeks, is that? What is that, Randy, that's the 28th?
Twenty-eight.
Okay. Twenty-eighth to the board?
That'd be fine with me.
All in favor? That is...
And FY13 budget, the first draft of the budget is ready. Finance committee will be meeting with department heads in the next month or so to review those. On the revenue side, we did get cherry sheet figures, and we were surprised by the removal of the town's share of racing money, which is mitigation that we get from the dog track, and that was removed by the governor, or in the governor's budget. So we've written to our legislative delegation in the House and Senate Ways and Means Chairman to get, get that restored. Upcoming... Upcoming, I guess this is the budget meeting with Bristol Plymouth to go over their proposed budget this Friday at 10 o'clock. And the veterans district meeting with the town manager from Middleborough next week to discuss forming a veterans district sometime in the future.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions for Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Buck.
Okay, selectmen's report. Mr. McKinnon? Mrs. Smith?
Nothing.
Nothing. We have a request from the Lions Club for their Chili Fest on Sunday, March 11th, 2012. It's been approved by Park and Rec for a one-day looker. What is our pleasure?
Moved to accept.
Second? All in favor? That is approved. We have a letter from the superintendent, Dr. Forbes, notifying us that there were 67 errors in the enrollment of the school. And she's going to be working with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And it's going to be a change in our appropriation by $15,379. We're not entirely sure which way that's going to go yet. So, she will keep us posted on that. But we appreciate her early interaction with us. From Mass DOT, they're notifying us that J.H. Lynch &amp; Sons has been awarded the contract to perform resurfacing on 495 through Bridgewater, Rainham, Totten, and Norton by Mass Department of Transportation. We have, from the Highway Department, this is a request to be allowed to spend over budget for snow and ice. Salt remains the largest expense, representing 36% of that budget. What is the board's pleasure on that?
Moved to accept.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
That is approved. We have a follow-up letter from our Board of Health and Correspondence, along, associated with the Department of Public Health, DPH. And this is just a thank you letter to the commissioner and CCing us, requesting future participation in any related activities to Triple E. Another letter from our superintendent inviting us to the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District Suicide Prevention Information Meeting, 6:30 p.m., Tuesday, February 28, at the BR High School on the second floor. And we thank the superintendent for that invitation. And we have the monthly activity report for January from the Fire Department, 141 ambulance calls, 84 fire calls. And that is it for correspondence. Community and citizen input. Josh, anything for us tonight?
Yeah, I was in San Diego the past few days. We have an interesting concept there. We have town blockies, abandoned two huge tennis courts. One had eight courts, one had 30 courts. And I'm a big tennis player, and I have to go all the way to east down Lake Bullepli tennis. I'm wondering if I was to try to develop tennis facilities, say, on town property, like even out by the middle school in the future, how would I approach that?
Uh, Park and Rec. And we do have some tennis courts handy. We have one on King Philip, and we have one at the middle school.
Yeah, I'm talking more like a year-round facility than...
Oh, and closed.
Closed, yes.
Indoor. We don't have any tennis.
Quite the build one, though, for the future.
We don't have the money.
We don't have any money for that.
How would I approach doing it? Because like in San Diego, like I played tennis every day. It was $5.
Yeah. You might look to one of the businesses like the Rainham Athletic Club to see if they have facilities there.